And based on that evaluation, it's been determined that they've been eligible for an 11-year abatement. The only thing more than 11 years is 12. That's the maximum number. So this was, this is quite a substantial abatement, but it's also a substantial investment that's been made in the community. So you have the documentation to go with the report. The annual value of the real property is approximately $8,789.55 in city taxes and three, I'm sorry, $33,925.92 to the other taxing jurisdictions. Excuse me, and I've got them listed in my report. Obviously, the goal of this abatement program is to encourage companies to invest in our community, and the abatement helps assist companies to do that, whether they're expanding or locating in the community. Excuse me. This is a temporary relief for the amount of years that they qualify for. Again, in this case, it's 11. So once that abatement ends, the $8,795.53 that was abated will then go on the tax rolls, and that becomes $17,579.10 to the city. And obviously, the amount that the taxing jurisdictions get will go over $60,000. And then the formula for figuring that all out is there. The city also benefits from the jobs that are retained as well as those that were created. There is a motion on the table for you after the public hearing. Jonathan Woods from Variety-Dine-Stamping is here. If you've got any questions, he's happy to answer them.
So let me, let's keep going with the poll of comments, and then we'll take questions.
Good evening.
Good evening.
From Variety-Dine, if you have any questions, you can ask them directly to me. We have a good answer.
Okay. Go ahead, Ray.
First, I just want to know, page 21 and 23 are duplicates. For the GJME.
Yeah, I think they are right. Yeah, they're duplicates.
Michelle, can you tell me how many abatements this has been for?
For Variety?
Yes.
Ah, let me think. Three or four. They have been in the community since...
27 years, I've figured out, on their application.
Mm-hmm. And I think this is the fourth one.
Yeah. How many years will this be for you in the industrial part?
Oh, since 1990, so 27 years.
So since the beginning, you've been in the industrial part?
We were in downtown Dexter prior to that.
Oh, right, we didn't have a tax accomplishment. Okay. And how, how long were you in town?
I was, well, 1955?
Yeah, a long time. Okay. Thank you.
So, Michelle, your, your second sentence of your write-up here says that they requested the abatement for a period of 10 years.
Yes, they did.
Do they only want 10?
Um, I think that not know, they didn't know what they could qualify for, and they put 10. When we did the evaluation, they actually qualified for 11. Did you not just 10?
No, they absolutely took 11.
What a pal.
Any other question?
It says that the 13 jobs created, when will those be created?
Um, over the course of the next year. So we had a similar abatement that we had applied for two years ago on our last addition, and I believe we were at around 85 to 90 employees at the time, and we are now at 116 at the time of this application. So I think we've exceeded the amount that we had anticipated for the last addition already in two years, and I would say my estimate of 13 was fairly conservative.
They, for the agreement that they will sign, they have to do it within two years.
Is there a callback within that? Okay. Do you know how many of your employees are city residents?
I do not know that.
All right, thanks.
Sounds like it's an interim project. Sounds like it's an interim project.
There you go.
Well, I, you know, when I started out this process of abatements, I was opposed to the concept of it because it only dealt with industrial developments. It didn't provide any relief at all for small businesses, which create more jobs than our industrial property, and more jobs created by small business than we do in industrial property. That being said, I just want to let you know that there, when we make this decision, it's just not the $8,000 that's affected by what comes back to the city. The relief for them. It's relief for a lot of other units of government. And the schools aren't getting their money. And my wife reminds me periodically, since she's on the library, the library doesn't get their money for that period of time. So it's just not the small amount of money, and called small, the $8,000 that we have for that, they don't get the bill.
Just one clarification, the state education tax is not subject to IFT. So the $6,000 for the state education tax, they pay the $6,000.
That's your credit.
The school doesn't get its debt.
Right.
But that's the debt.
I guess my point was, we affect more than just the taxes that are being baited out of the city.
Yeah, you mean when we make the decision.
When we make the decision. A lot of times, the community doesn't understand that. They just get the idea that, well, the city is not getting this amount of money. That's true.
We've tried to, over the years, focus on the fact that we benefit by the real property investment, though.
You're absolutely right.
If the investment wasn't made, and I know that wasn't the point you were not saying, but if they don't make the investment, nobody gets the 33, the other taxing jurisdictions don't get the 33 either. It's like, we don't get the 8. So even though we are giving them a break for 11 years, or whatever the request is, the increase, the increase to all the jurisdictions doesn't happen without the investment by companies.
And I have to say that Variety-Dine has been a benefactor factor of a number of units, number of activities within the city here, and I hope that they will continue to do that, and they will continue to increase that. So whether it's the Encore Theater, or the library, or things like that, I encourage you to participate in the taxes. Thank you anyway.
Comments by council? Yeah, I'm done here in a second. We went off track to take the questions, so I'm just going to take them all at this time. Okay. Is there anybody else in the audience who'd like to speak while the public hearing is still open? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing at...
7:42.
7:42?
I move we adopt a resolution approving a request from Variety-Dine-Stamping for an industrial facilities tax exemption certificate for investments in real property improvements at 221 Bishop Circle West, Dexter, Michigan, subject to the execution of an industrial facilities exemption certificate agreement by the city and Variety-Dine-Stamping for a period of 11 years.
Thank you. Second by Cousins. Thank you. Any discussion?
First, whereas paragraph, it's, we've done the number, so P-A, the A is for act.
Go page, Roger.
Page 13 of 10, so we can cut out the act. No more acting.
Okay. Good question.
One other thing you'll notice in the audit this year will be a new paragraph where we have to disclose how much value, or how much taxable value is being not collected because of the abatement. So that's kind of a new thing the state requires us to put in our audit.
I'm surprised we never had to do that before.
Yeah, so that will be something you guys...
So that's for all the abatements, huh?
Right. In our case, it's, I think it's only IFT we get.
Right.
Well, we have that summary, it's easy to come up with, right?
Yeah, no, we have a number. But you'll just see that we have to actually track that, and that we couldn't really fit in our audits.
Okay, please call a vote.
Michelle's?
Yes.
Knight?
Yeah.
Smith?
Yes.
Till?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Cousins?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you for your continued investment. Good luck to you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
We're down to nonarranged participation. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on to communications. There are four communications in the package. Left on the meeting list, on the signed calendar, a letter from the former chair of commissioners regarding the city election date change possibility, and then for the 2017 community board report. Mr. Smith?
I'd like to request that the letter for that, the topic of the city election date change, we put it as a discussion item on one of these boards.
Okay. Other comments on the communication? Okay, first report this evening is from Republic Services Superintendent. Good evening, Dan.
Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
Hopefully, everybody's enjoying the snowing weather. Seems a little early, doesn't it? I don't know. This fall was pretty late.
I provide you with a two-week report. If you have any questions, I have to take them first, and then I've got a couple updates after your question.
Is that not a question, but an observation? Whoever is working the brush downtown Saturday really know what they're doing. There's, like, they're painting with that thing. It was fantastic.
Okay.
So kudos to whoever's doing it.
Moving the snows.
Yes.
Thank you, all. Well, no. Other comments? Other than yours, Dan?
Um, we're hoping ice rink's going to go up this week. We haven't got confirmation for sure.
Wednesday.
What's that?
First time this week.
After the first of the year, we're going to be pulling one of our wells, well number four. So I'll be bringing back a bid on that. But as we all know, we really don't know what you're getting into until you get the 200 feet of pipe out, and we look at the motor, and it really, it's a cleaning. We have plastic in there, so I'm hoping that it's just going to be a cleaning, that it's not going to be, you know, 10,000 to 12,000.
Which one's four?
It's the one down at the bottom of the hill, down behind here on farms.
Oh, this is a maintenance item?
Yeah, it's just maintenance, preventative maintenance. Correct, yeah. But it's hard to bid that until you get it down.
When's the last time we looked at it, Dan?
I don't have the date on it, but it's, I can, I'll have that next time. Actually, I can give you the dates on every one.
Probably five, four, five years.
Right. But I can, I can, I can put that in my report where we're at for that.
Because people only go putting plastic in for not that long.
Yeah, we've got two right now. We went over and visited, this is wastewater. We're looking at fine screening, grit removal. We went over the lockout, finally looked at theirs, because it's a little bit different than what F&amp;B has been wanting us to look at. We also, I had a meeting with a salesperson for a totally different company, so we got F&amp;B that's trying to lead us. I mean, Blair and them guys have dealt with it a lot. They've been using the same 1977 equipment. I just wanted to make you guys aware, we're going beyond F&amp;B, you know, to look at different, different things, because it's, and it's expensive piece of equipment, talking to the operators. We plan, I don't know if I'll get it done before the first year. Chelsea has got one that they've been running for probably about 10 years too. So we're going to go over there and look what they got. Last meeting, the mayor had asked me about my report. I've had high arsenic levels in our sludge. And I, we figured out what the problem was, is that the company that comes and hauls our sludge should give us like 30 minutes to mix it. So everything is the same as what it usually is, it's very low in arsenic, but when you don't have time to mix that 400,000 gallons, and you pull from the wrong, it's concentrated. So we figured that out. So actually, I took it one step further. We're going to see, instead of paying them the $400 to sample our sludge, if we can do what I did this time, is we send our own samples out. So that way, we have a little bit more control over how long we mix. So the arsenic isn't a problem. I mean, it's almost not detachable.
Good. Thank you for the follow-up on that.
Do you expect them this week?
Yes, any day. You know, we're running, running a little late. But it was, it was the, you know, the same point procedure. So we got that straight back. Other than that...
Talk about your training.
Pardon me?
Talk about your training last week.
My training last week?
With the fire department.
Oh, yeah. Thank you. Last week, a gentleman, Lee from the Dexter Fire Department, our lead operator for the water, Tim Stewart, working with a representative from East Jordan, or EJ now they call it, they put a hydrant class together. So we went over to Station Two, myself and the chief, and there was probably 25 of us total over there. So the gentleman from East Jordan walked through a hydrant that was cut in half, showed all the pieces, the parts to it. We went over things that we run into here, things that my operators and myself have had problems with. We also, the chief had brought, bought a flow testing equipment that we're going to work with the Dexter Fire Department with, to do some flow monitoring around the different hydrants, which I'm, I know will fit perfect with our GIS stuff that we're doing. So we've got all the hydrants, the valves, the manholes, everything in there. Once we get the computer program for how we're going to run that, we could also associate these flows that we're doing with all these different hydrants. That I think would be a huge asset, not only to us, but the Dexter Fire Department.
I'm so glad that overlays with the GIS, which was always kind of the intent.
Right.
Once upon a time.
Um, we're working through it. It's, it's taken us a little bit of time to get to where we're at. Now we've got another meeting, hopefully, we're going to be able to do this week, to get all those points and make sure they're accurate. I mean, we physically, our operators went out and dug up everything. And then we gave it to Ritter in OHM, and they brought back what we didn't have, or what OHM thought we had. So now we're in the process of the end of the GIS with probably 30, 40 points, that I think we just about got them all. So this is, I mean, as we go forward, this is going to be something that's, that's going to help us forever. There won't be any more 31-year guys trying to remember where everything's at. Right? I mean, that's what, we should be beyond that.
Don't have to call you in your house in Florida.
It's still okay if they know.
No, it is, it is, but when you bring in new people in, there's a, I mean, we have a lot of things to do, and they take a lot less time to do those if we knew exactly, you know, I could send them out with a little touchpad and say, get after it. But anyway.
Well, that's what we're talking about with the fire department, they could have, like, an iPad window reading only after, so that if they go to a fire, they could see where the hydrants are, and what the flows are, and if you use this one and this one, and this amount coming out. So it could be very useful.
Well, we have a couple of that ends, like at, you know, Broad and Grand. And it'd be nice if they, I mean, I'm sure they have somebody, if we had that information, they'd know where to go to make sure that, you know, they're not pulling too much water to try to put out their fire.
I wonder if that'll lower our ISO.
I think they already give us credit for any hydrants. And they probably assume we know where they are.
But the one nice thing about the meeting was, we, we talked them through the things that we want to call, whether it's a fire or a leak in hydrant, you know, we exchanged phone numbers that we have done in the past, but it was nice to have people looking at each other. There's a lot of fire, a lot more firemen than there is Dexter employees.
Good.
What's your shitty problem?
Anyway, is there any more questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, Dan.
Thanks.
Next up is Community Development Manager, Michelle, how are you?
Fine, thank you very much. How's Council today?
Good.
Okay, yes, Dan and I...
These classes are...
They're my last, really. Oh, I forgot. I got it.
I, I have bifocal contact, and we've gotten to the point where they can't adjust the distance and the ear anymore, so I know.
I have to go into that, because just want to know where it's, if it's anything around.
We're a team.
Yes, we are a team. So you have my report in front of you. Do you have any questions before I go into the updates?
Just on the schools, so we have gotten a set of second revised plan subjects.
We have a revised set of plans, but they won't be incorporating your comments, because they came in the day that you made that.
So are you going to share those?
Oh, yeah, we will share those.
Okay.
Yeah.
I wasn't going to have them come back for, like, approval again, though.
No. Well, whatever, I just, I mean, I don't think we approved it last time, did we? We just kind of made comments, right?
Right. It's, they're going to, they probably will have some changes to Patrick's. There are absolutely no changes to mine, but I know that there will be some minor ones that I think they changed to Patrick's, but...
As long as our comments are attached to their application or whatever, that's fine.
It was almost just a completion of some of the incomplete parts, really.
Yes.
It was, we had asked for a number of things at the meeting.
At that meeting, right.
And took them a while to actually get them out.
How do they react to that driveway across the...
You mean the, to research the internal connection?
Yeah, so going across on Dan Oyler.
They have not provided any comments back. So...
Hmm? Sorry, you can say this.
So, any other questions?
Just the one I had, thank you.
Okay. So we received a temporary special use application from dealing with Mug &amp; Box. It was from a seafood company that approached them to put their truck onsite and sell seafood one day a week, every four weeks, from January through November. So they're the applicants. Mug &amp; Box, the property owner, is allowing it, subject to the city's regulations. The, the, I've tentatively stamped it approved. It meets all the requirements. They're not using any sanitary sewer, they're not using any, they're not connecting to water. Its operations would run three to seven in the afternoon, just the one day, every four weeks. It'd operate out of a truck, and they have requested a sandwich board sign. Everything would be on the Mug &amp; Box site. There would still be plenty of parking that they use there. It meets the requirement, so I've tentatively blessed that.
Can you give me the months again, please? September, November?
January through November.
January, November.
So January 8th through November 12th.
That's okay. Yeah, it's three to seven.
One day. One day. Actually, only four hours, actually.
One day per week, or one day per month?
One day per month.
Per month.
Well, one day every four weeks. And that is pretty much every month except April.
Is that going to fall under fireworks ordinance or something, where we allow them to do that?
Yes, that's saying temporary special use structures, yes. What's the name of the company that's bringing this in? It's seafood something. I forget, I don't remember off the top of my head. I will email it to you all. Oh, there also will not be any onsite consumption or preparation. It's frozen fish that they'll just be selling out of the truck. There's a, there is an update on the Encore Theater. Excuse me. It has to do, you remember maybe from your last meeting, I had had a conversation with Dan Cooney. They were looking at enclosing the loading area. They also had conversations with the building department, the inspectors at the building department, and John Hamlin has let them know for what they want to do, and because of the, there's a new, there are some new rules to the building code, they have to have a full, complete set of construction plans. So at this particular point, they're kind of on hold with that, so we'll, we'll see where this one goes. The 3045 Broad Street Committee met with the Norfolk team today to do a sort of a debriefing from the community workshop that happened last week. Thanks to everybody who was able to make it. It was very well attended, probably 25 to 30 people, if I, if I have my numbers correct. Lots of comments, based on a variety of different topics, the way they had stationed the, the room. They will be providing a summary. They will, they will do it in a hierarchical manner and provide structure, so it's not just, it's not just a list of every comment that was made. There'll be some context to it. And then we will post that on the website, just like we did for the comments previous. They will come back to us after the first of the year. We'll set up another quick meeting with the 3045 Broad Street Committee to determine what direction we go for the second community engagement workshop. And, let's see. The consensus building workshop was the following day after there'd be community engagement workshop. So this would have been with the business community as part of the economic development strategy. Excuse me. There were nearly 20 attendees, not including council, members at the meeting. Staff's going to be following up with the consultant to see what summary comments they have. But it was, it was a good session. People were very engaged, and we did receive a, an email from one of the business owners thanking us for, for hosting it and giving them the opportunity to provide comments. It was, I think it was very positive. And that's all that I have today.
Questions for Michelle?
This CrossFit thing, who's Doug Smith? Is he the landowner?
Oh, yes, Doug Smith is the landowner.
He says the Old Times Insurance business? Is that the Old Times?
Across the street.
The Old, the Old Times Insurance.
Okay, yes.
The Dawson River.
I didn't know it was that.
Yeah. Sorry.
That's okay.
All right, that's all. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Julie?
Yeah, for a paragraph, the EPA case of...
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah. Property, third and infirmness, that's got the people that came in that had the fire on the...
No, that's across the street, yes.
Thank you, that's what I thought it was, that's my clarification. Thank you.
And then actually, that hearing got postponed until January, it'll be in December, maybe January.
Yes, thank you for that.
Okay. Very good, thank you very much. I think we're down to City Manager Report. Corey?
We do proceed. Go draft.
We did proceed, go draft, it's an audit, so we expect to be overfiled hopefully by the end of the week. Probably the, it was the first or second meeting in January, so, I guess it can be the first one now since you come all the time. The, um, I did go to a meeting today with the sheriff, um, the police service steering committee met, and they talked, one of the things he wanted to talk about, the main topic, was the contract extension, so we just did the contract extension for twenty eighteen, which was a one and a half percent increase. Um, so what they think they can get passed from the county board of commissioners is a zero, uh, or no increase for twenty eighteen and, I'm sorry, for twenty nineteen and twenty twenty, and then a one and a half in twenty-one and twenty-two. So, it's, uh, pretty much increases, um-
Can we get a five-year ten track, or is it a year?
It would be a four-year, yeah, from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-two.
Could, so eighteen would just be a separate standard?
We did eighteen.
All right.
Yeah, yeah, for the one and a half. So that would be, um, you know, pretty, well, it's kind of, one of the things, the township they asked about was, you know, the millage is, that they got the one mill, it's based on a certain amount of taxable value this year, but chances are that taxable value is gonna go up, and will the value of the millage, so that isn't something they quite factor in, but, and our township said that their township alone, their taxable value estimated to up like a hundred million dollars or something in the next few years, because they have a big Toyota project. So, that could be something that might help like for twenty twenty-three, too, you know, that if that value of the millage has gone up, that could offset future costs as well.
Long as we remind, no?
Yeah, oh, trust me, I didn't, they're all over that. I did go early and met with the new director of emergency management that took over Mark Rockendrige's spot, Dave. I always forget how to state his name, it's like, I can't think of it off the top of my head, but he, um, so I met down in his office and just to kind of, um, touch base with him, and, you know, he showed me around sort of their emergency operations center and, um, so, it gives me, that's, you know, basically, um, the person that, you know, turns on, has the outdoor warning sirens cast and monitors things like that for when we have emergencies, um, in the city. And then I did find out that we're getting a new school liaison officer, so Jeremy will go back, um, onto the road, and it will be, um, an officer, or Jared named Jared Beesel, who went to Dexter High School and has kids that go to Dexter Schools, it sounds like he'll be a bit similar to Jeremy's who had kids here as well, so. That will be, in the next few months, they've been working together.
Do they bid those positions?
Yeah, so they hadn't bid it in nine, in nine years.
Yeah, I don't know.
Because they were happy, you know, with Jeremy's service, and I think they have to bid at least two of those types of positions every year, so they just kind of decided to do it, and so, it's gonna change. And he works, he will work here mostly in the summer because those things, his services are in the city, um, in the summer months like Jeremy's work. So, that, unless there's any other-
Did anybody start on Hudson's today?
Yes, they did.
Or this week, or last week?
They did today.
Today? Today? Jim? Sorry.
On the last page of your report, page forty-eight, uh, there's the reference to the Sully Committee recommendation for pre-council meeting, up session, and it says, uh, will be scheduled for the first or second meeting. Do we have an idea of that, which meeting?
Um, not really, I don't, do anyone have a preference?
I'd make it the second.
Okay.
Early in the year.
Yeah, okay. Um, we do have the outstanding, um, tax tribunal case with DAFCO. So, I have a proposal for the valuation disclosure that I can bring to council in January, um, so that we can move forward with the appraisal, and, you know, we only end up like with the last minute of these things, so trying to avoid that, if council's okay to enter, I'll put that on the January agenda, so we can move forward with figuring that one out.
Okay.
And the, the other thing we wanted to talk about was, we have these videos now that were, we had the Under the Radar featuring the Paint Dexter Festival plus the Under the Radar, you know, we had different videos, some that we created, and so we need to figure out how we're going to put those out there for people to actually see. So one of the things we talked about was, um, creating a city YouTube channel, which is actually free, um, and just provides somewhere where we can link to and put all these videos in one place, so, you know, if council's comfortable just having us do that, and then you can take a look at it and see if you like it, but it would just give us one place to link the videos to, um, so that we can actually get them out there.
How did the bids come in for the tree program?
The, um, we had two low bidders and two high bidders, and the difference in them is who they use to get their stock from. So the high bidders get them from Wine Guards, um, out of Millstone County.
From where?
From Wine Guard and Christian's Nursery. So those bids were double and almost triple in some cases. And then the two low bidders use local or, um, smaller nurseries. Excuse me, the, I sent the log out to the treaty board and asked them since, well, one of the low bidders, we don't know anything about, it's a new bidder to us, um, if they would like to at least interview them, uh, to see. Some of the, some of their bids were extremely low, and it caused me a little concern when it comes to things like warranties and such. Um, but we'll go through the process of at least interviewing and see, um, if they're, if it's a viable bid, um, and if not, then, uh, we'll go with the next lowest, who is, um, the person that we've been working with for the last, I believe, five years, so. But I can make sure that you have that log at your next meeting.
Great, thank you.
Julie?
I have a couple of, whatever happened to your questions? Whatever happened to moving to Ico on corner of Baker Main, is that still?
Well, I repurposed that money to other priorities for this fiscal year. Not that it couldn't be something we do in the future, but for this fiscal year, we've had other things come up.
Okay, and do we know whatever happened to the Girl Scouts putting it in a little library book in the line?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I've tried contacting them a couple of times, and, um, the, the latest time, which was probably month and a half, two months ago, they said, um, once the school year kicks back in, no. It must've been more than two months, because I think she said, once the school year kicks back in, that, um, one of the fathers, they were planning on having them, having helped them create this little library would be more available, and I haven't heard anything, anything since then.
Um, on page forty-four, going into Mill Creek Park Phase Two, um, when I was, had that preliminary meeting with Chris Temis about the school's objections to the trail that was originally proposed, and, um, they felt that there could be some modification of that, you know, uh, that that was, uh, reaction a lot to, uh, proximity of the path to the playground, that it could be mitigated somehow. Well, one thing he did say, and I think I mentioned it before, was that they were really prohibited by the, um, the MDEQ from putting a, an optic line along Baker Road that crossed the area that we're gonna put a path in. And they actually prevented, and this was like, he said, a three-quarter inch optic line, and they wouldn't let them do it because it went across the wetland area. Have we had any discussion at all about how that's gonna be mitigated in that area there for handling a lot more of those smaller line?
We, um, so Paul Evanoff and I discussed that, that question, um, because it was brought up to us as well. Um, there are, there are ways to work within stream beds, ways to work within wetlands, um, and certainly JJR and Paul know all those. Um, as part of some of the work that was done assessing where everything would go relative to the path in wetlands, um, their design is sensitive to that, and, um, I think if that trail does go kind of outletting towards Baker Road, it'll be put at an elevation where it's gonna be above the floodplain, it's not gonna be in there, and even if it was, if you do, um, basically kind of, if you have to put, fill in the floodplain, you take it out, that kind of thing, as long as you balance it, um, DEQ allows you to do that, so, um, they may have had a, a more simple approach where they didn't, um, maybe go through the right routes with DEQ, but you can certainly pass utilities within wetlands. We did it on Shield Road.
So I've seen a, a diagram on a, on a piece of paper that says, here's where the path's gonna be. Working there and spending part of my life there teaching, that, I'm very familiar with that section. That's the drainage that comes from all the water, from up above, and it comes across Baker Road underneath, and basically goes out through them. How are you gonna mitigate all of the, the trash that's in that bed?
Or are they?
And on the sides of the wall, particularly towards the schools?
So, um, I can't specifically speak for the project, it's really more of a design from Smith Group, JGR, but just from some of my experiences with stream bank projects, um, and we did include costs to do some work on, on the one stream bank we were gonna be working on, I think it's the south side in that location.
South side, that's where else the trail was?
Yeah, we included, um, effort to go in there and remove invasive plants and stabilize the stream beds, there's some erosion issues in there as well.
Yeah.
So it, it's considered of all those, uh, I guess, call it, uh, incidental type costs that would come from putting a trail there, um, so, it's, I think it's a fairly well-thought-out, um, approach that they, JGR did put together for that.
They do know it was a township dump for like twenty-five years?
And I don't know.
The city not been a dump?
Well, but, but wait a minute, wait a minute. Have we even determined that it's on the south side?
I don't know.
Well, working with the schools, they did not want the north side because they didn't want it close to the daycare. That was basically what they-
That's what I was talking-
Arrived at.
Oh, I heard that, I thought they didn't want it behind Creekside.
That too, that too, so, I guess-
The one in your playground or daycare.
But, okay.
I'm just, I'm just general questions.
I would say the answer is no, we're not cleaning all that up, we're gonna cap, we're gonna go right over the top of it.
That's, excuse me, John, it's easy to say, but it's not easy to do, because I, you have to realize that that was a township their dump, and there are refrigerators and all kinds of things that protrude out of there now. Covering them up would be literally filling in part of that drainage area, and I know the DEQ is gonna let you do that.
Okay. Because I haven't seen that.
Guaranteed it.
Yeah, I'm not aware of that.
Tires and everything else.
Okay.
Just a question, I have one other one, maybe two more, uh, no, one other. In the, in, on page forty-six, in the first street park, we are reapplying next year, is that what the, I'm getting out of this, we're reapplying for that?
Well-
Grant next year?
We haven't really talked about what to do yet, because we haven't gotten the final funding numbers yet, for sure, that we aren't gonna get the funds, I mean, we assume, so we assume we're not, but they haven't released the final number yet.
For this year?
For this year.
Thank you.
So our options will be, you know, we do have thirty thousand dollars budgeted that would go far to do-
Of our present fund, our funds?
That was our map, so we could probably do some, you know, decent things down there, maybe not, you know, obviously the trails and probably not moving the pits, but, you know, we could do things for thirty thousand dollars as opposed to just doing nothing. Um, or yeah, there's always an option to try to reapply for the trails and see, you know, if stuff gets funded more in the future, or if score is better.
I, I guess I just, I'm gonna let you, let the horseshoe, um, group know what you're doing as early as possible because they have to make adjustments.
Right, so if we did decide to just spend the thirty thousand dollars, you know, that could be on, you know, some sort of temporary, a storage facility, kind of like what we have at the community garden, or the farmer's market, and, you know, new benches and things like that, so I don't know that there'd be a lot of physical construction.
Yeah.
But yeah, I mean, it would be something we could do easily in the spring before the season started. So parks will discuss that, I think, once we get the final numbers, they'll probably be anywhere in the range.
Yeah, they, they stated that they would get us final, a final determination by the end of December.
And they just released the-
The trust fund.
Funding, so I would think-
I've heard that, right.
Too far behind.
Thank you.
Other questions on City Manager Report? I just have one meeting to add to my upcoming activities, uh, tomorrow at five PM. Zach and I are meeting with Marie, the finance committee is, been asked to come together, I believe. Marie wants to talk about investment advisors, is that the topic?
Yeah.
We have that tomorrow at five at City Hall. I think, City Hall?
Yeah. Yeah, I do.
Michelle covered the meeting on the sixth and the seventh pretty well, does anybody have questions for me? The Luminary Workshop was very well attended, very efficient. Positive, everybody got, got one in the entire city, so that's cool. PPW guys did a great job getting the materials there and providing the heat, always, knowing.
Right, yeah, we have to watch them, the kids love watching when Kurt used the loader to fill the salt truck, yeah, that was pretty cool.
Yeah, they're, they're just excited about putting the candles in the bag.
Right. It's actually really funny because there's donuts, and so the kids, the, you know, little boys, the Boy Scouts and Cub Scouts and all, would go in there and need a donut, and they would come back and they would be just like buzzing on sugar, and so then they'd run around. The donuts were key.
Okay, there are, um, five matters on the consent agenda, including our organizational matters resolution from our workshop on the thirtieth, council rules.
And we'll be approving the five items on the consent agenda. Bills and payroll in the amount of two hundred and six thousand, five hundred and twenty-five dollars and fifty-four cents. The organizational matters resolution, council rules, uh, the twenty eighteen meeting calendar, and the Ray Point Metro, the Economic Development Corporation.
Moved by Fisher, second by Smith. Thank you both. All those in favor, we're approving the consent agenda, so if I'm saying hi, please. Those opposed?
Can we make sure that, uh, by all means possible, however it is, putting skywriting in the sky, telling the newspapers, anybody that does that, put on that, that we're gonna be meeting at seven o'clock starting January, okay?
Okay, now that it's a chaos, I can-
Okay, so we have no old business to discuss, we're down to new business. We have five items of new business. Item L one is consideration of a notice of intent resolution to issue capital improvement bonds related to our waste to our treatment plant upgrade.
I'll offer the resolution as shown on page seventy-eight and seventy-nine.
A second.
Three, Michelle's.
And eight.
Excuse me?
A second, that part two.
It's all, yeah.
Courtney, John?
Yes, well, I was speaking with our, with Tom Crazyak, kind of talking through the timing of the project, and he suggested that we do this, um, resolution now so that we can get the notice, the referendum published and open up the forty-five day period, and if people could file a referendum against the issuance of the bond. And, uh, just so that when the bids come back, everybody, this step has already been taken. Um, the goal will be to sell the bonds within about thirty to forty-five days after the bids are received, and, um, and you know what the project cost is going to be, because, um, you know, we just wanna make sure we're only doing this process once. Um, the notice of intent sets the ceiling on what the bonds can be, but it doesn't mean that that's what it will be, council will make that decision, um, when the time comes to actually do the sale. So we will reimburse ourselves for the costs we've incurred for design, which actually hasn't been billed any cost for design yet. Um, and, uh, yeah, so we should be, we have a thirty percent design meeting on Monday, next Monday, so they're moving along. Like Dan was saying, they've been touring different facilities and, and they're super engaged in the process. Do you guys have, you have a meeting at F and V, too, right? Is that, that's this week?
Yeah, I can't remember what day I'm on.
I think it's the-
I'm just going to agree, right, let's be with the design team, and let our lead operator loose. Ten wait.
Right.
That's good, we're working together, we're looking at every grain, and we got a lot of questions, so. It'd be a great time to get them answered.
So this one's the bond council, um, Tom Crazyak.
So this one's the bond council, Tom Crazyak, and after the end, we were going to...
A lot of money, but it's a big step for a burden thing, so. Just call a vote.
To.
Yes.
Cousins?
Yes.
Michelle's?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Knight?
Yes.
Kio?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you. This is item L2, consideration of personal property tax check distribution. So there's a draft motion on the bottom of that one.
Yeah, basically, this council wants to do this to approve the distribution, and one thing we do need to put in the motion is that we unassign $100,000, because council had officially assigned that to being in a kind of a bond, just in case we needed it this year. So we just need to unassign that. And then I would like to be able to cut the MERS check immediately, so that it can be included as part of our 2017 valuation. And we have to get it to them by December 31st, for that to be true.
I'll make the motion.
Okay. Moved by Smith?
Approve the immediate release to there and for the distribution.
And the assignment of the...
And the assignment.
Second.
Second by Michelle, thank you. Okay, Paul, thanks for your...
No problem. This is new to me, I know what the reason that we're getting money back. I guess a lot more is better than a lot less, and we got a lot more, it's a pretty big hunk of money. I guess what I would like to know is, in the two distribution accounts of the OPB and the MERS account, the OPAH and that, what, where are we now in that, I guess the percentage is the word I want to use, of where we should, I don't know where we should be, but, just tell me where we are in the percentage now, in that area.
So with MERS, our last actuarial through the end of 2016 was 82%.
What's recommended?
It was about a 70, it was a $700,000 unfunded liability, and it was 82% funded. And that had gone up from like 70-something percent the year before, in large part because one of our employees died before his actuarial lifespan ended, unfortunately. So, or one of our retirees, I should say. So, that's at 82%. OPAH, I want to say it's around 45%ish, because it's about two point, yeah, we're getting closer there. We probably have about 1.2 in there-ish.
A bit more.
Yeah, and then I think the actuarial's up at like 2.1, 2.2, somewhere so it's...
And the recommended, okay, raise next question, is what?
Well, OPAH isn't a requirement yet, but next year we'll start showing up on our books as a, you know, the difference, like it does now with the pension, so...
I want to say the task force for OPAH, did they say 30?
Yeah, I don't think the state was going to like start messing with you until you got to like, unless you were like 30.
Like under 30.
Under 30.
It was either under 20 or under 30.
Right. Yeah, but wait, but let's, I heard the question differently. I mean, ideally, you want to be 100% funded on these things.
Right, yeah.
And then you don't have any problem at all. So, our goals for the last 10 years, we've climbed out from zero in 2008 to whatever percentage we are, 40, 45, 50, whatever that number is, depending on, because remember, the valuations changed.
I got that.
So we're at least 40% there, we think.
So, so with those, what will these two contributions do, obviously should help, but do we know what percentage we would be with these contributions at all?
Well, MERS is very hard to tell, right, because it's all actuarially calculated, but we will find out what it does for us in May, because we'll get another valuation. Now, we'll have, we'll have made two additional payments to MERS in 2017 because of this, because we made one already from the first round of personal property tax increase we got, which I think was like $80,000 we put in there. So this will be another 67, plus we pay extra every month. So, we will have a lot of extra money and put into it, and now that, the way that they structure it now, that will come directly from the unfunded liability, or be applied toward the unfunded liability. So the nice thing about that is it won't arbitrarily lower our payment in the future, which is what happened last year, because we paid so much extra that then they're like, oh, good, you're 82% funded, we're going to lower your payment. Well, that's not how it works, so...
We don't want that.
Exactly, yeah, so we're not going to actually do that. But by, by the way that they've set up this new division, any extra funding will offset your unfunded liability, so it should show an impact on that $700,000, that's pretty significant. Plus, MERS made money this year.
Yeah, Paul, it should, I mean, if that $700,000 number that you mentioned, that gap, represents the 18% behind that we are, difference between 80 to 100.
Yeah.
And we're putting in 67, and we put in 80 earlier, 150, so we're taking 20% of that 18%, you know, it'll be like, it should move the needle 3%, or maybe 4, if we're lucky with the good gains.
So did I miss here, or do we get two payments a year in this?
No, this, the personal property tax is just one a year. It's just last year, there was, well, there's still confusion about it.
We waited till...
Yeah, we waited a little bit before we did anything with it, because we weren't sure if this state made a huge mistake and was going to say, hey, we want back.
They asked for their money back.
Yeah, so we didn't actually, we got it in November, when we didn't do anything with it until February or March, because we waited until we knew we were going to get to keep it, because it was like $550,000.
And the state still has not released the backup for this check.
Right. Okay, excuse me, I got a couple more. No, please. Would, when we calculate next year, will we try to calculate more, so that we're that close, or are you...
No, we've been...
You still worried that they're not going to pay it?
No, no, they're going to pay it. We've been calculating based on 100% reimbursement of essential services loss. So, what we are getting is 100% of that, plus all this excess money that they're getting from the use tax. And that's no guarantee that either we're going to continue getting that, or the legislature's been tinkering, we just, it's better to be safe than sorry, I think.
The governor promises.
Well, the 100% has been true, I mean, the 100% reimbursement, that's...
But it doesn't have to be true.
Absolutely.
But that's the $193,000 that we budgeted for, just they're using a multiplier on that, that's what we, they can't estimate. And it is less this year than it was last year, but they corrected a few mistakes in their formula.
We hope.
Right, so...
We don't know.
You know, it could stay high, it could, you know...
And just two, two finals, I think. That's the, the restrict for Mill Creek, for the DTE land swap that we're paying off, that bond that we had used to buy the land originally, and the TPD, the W.
Yeah, as soon as it becomes taxable, we have to pay it off.
And the...
Well, then we'll need to pull another 100 from our current reserves, right, to match the 200? Right, we're going to 205, right?
No, we only have half, because we're only selling half the land.
Oh, I thought we had to pay the whole thing off.
No, no, just the part that's not, yeah, the part that's still taxable.
And I, hopefully, the last is the Mill Creek Park Phase Two, this is what was, we were estimating was going to be our share to match the trust fund?
Basically, yeah, it was about $200,000, so, yeah.
Have we set aside any money at all for this, for that?
No.
Not at all?
No.
So, and we may need more?
Um, yeah, you know, it has to be bid and everything, but that's at least...
We did that before, we did that, we had to have more before. Thank you very much.
We think about it.
Ray?
I want to ask Marie of that late-night session the Michigan Legislature had about the police and fire and all that effectiveness, and I see they backed down at the last minute. So I was just wondering, I know, I think I saw some from MML or somebody, or some cog.
It looks like they're just going more with the recommendation, look at communities that are in danger, and they set some kind of threshold level for OPAH, you know, for that, we're not in that neighborhood.
It's just the way it's worded, it looks like.
Yeah, well, I think, you know, from what I've read, I think you're going to get some pushback from some people, because they don't want to open up the emergency manager law.
Right.
Oh, I know.
And incorporate this into it, so I don't really know how sure it is to keep thinking like. I haven't really seen anything since last week.
No, so to say...
Yeah, I only really got it out from what it was...
Yeah, in fact, the two sponsors voted against it.
They were trying to take advantage of an opportunity to help, but it was too much.
I mean, it really goes back to what the MML's been pushing for a long time, and is that their whole municipal finance system in the state needs to be looked at holistically, and legislatures don't do holistic.
How often do these accounts do their actuarial that we have to react to?
So MERS will do, does theirs every year, and then we, I think we have to do our OPAH bond every, maybe three.
Three, yeah. And we just did it...
Didn't we work in a five-year plan for us, that would equal us?
Um, in, we did, in MERS, we were paying, so the unfunded liability should be paid up in 10 years. But, which should be, at least, I mean, it should be less than that because of our extra payments.
I can't remember, we had like a...
And then for OPAH, we actually made more than our annual required contribution this year. If you take into account how much we paid in benefits, which is about $40,000 to have retiring healthcare, plus our $130,000, we actually made our required contribution.
And we, we still aren't using our OPAH investment account to pay any current retiree healthcare, we're not doing that yet.
When we overpay, can we ask for that money back?
At the end, if all of our retirees are no longer collecting their benefits, then you can have them...
Until then, it has to go towards the unfunded...
It stays in the trust, yeah, it stays in the trust. Oh, same with MERS and the pension, yeah, it all stays in the trust.
I mean, they tell you, you got to put in 10, and you made 12, so give me my 20, but no, it goes against your 20.
Right, because it's all going towards that unfunded liability, it's not going towards our normal cost.
Yeah, I just wondered that. You have to pay this much, went both ways, so what, we paid that much, that's extra.
Yeah, then they'll just change the actuarial tables, and we'll be back to square one, so, as long as everyone's living too long.
Okay.
We've done a lot of good work getting to where we are with this, though.
Well, we all knew the economy was going to turn around, especially...
Especially since only 2009, they had $1.1 million.
I made that assumption. It's important, pretty dangerous, probably.
It's important, but also the city employees have been contributing also, took less benefit. So jointly together, is what I really think has worked out well. Zach?
Do we have any idea why we're so high, again, from what we predicted?
They have not released the documentation yet. I expected the same thing as last time, is that they just collected more than they expected to. They had told us that it would still be higher this year, they didn't indicate it would be almost as high as it was last year, that was a little bit of a surprise to me.
And they have something in that statute that says that they have to untail that fund every year?
They have to distribute 100% of it.
Right.
Good. Take it well, Pat?
It's good.
Right, to go to one-time thing.
Yeah, I think all these recommendations are strong, they're things that we're trying to do and need to do, so, makes sense to me. Okay, call a vote. Please call a vote.
Fisher?
Yes.
Michelle's?
Yes.
Knight?
Yes.
Cousins?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
To?
Yes.
Kio?
Yes.
Motion carries. New to the side of L3, consideration of setting of city polling locations.
I'll make that motion with the amendment.
I'll second.
You want to hear? Okay, thank you. You want to hear from him first, or...
No, the motion first, good. Motion by Charles, second by...
And my amendment is that we pay the senior center $600, I know that we paid them something for use of this, but I think they give up a lot that day with their feeding, people here, their meals on wheels and that, and I think that if we're going to pay this church $300, we can, they have one polling precinct, we can pay senior center 2, amongst that, that's my motion.
So it's a setting of city polling locations as shown here, but you are...
Would add, would add $600 to the senior center for the use of their polling facility.
Because it has two districts, eh?
Okay.
The logic is because it has, it has two potentially...
Yes.
Two voting districts or precincts?
Yes.
So it would be consolidated, for an election, it would only be one.
Correct. And it would be here, in the snow line.
Would you phrase that per polling location?
Yeah, I can do that.
No, it's got to be per precinct.
Or per precinct, yeah, per precinct as well, that was my intention.
Because for, for most elections, we would, we would look to consolidate.
Which means it would only be 300?
Correct.
So, the Election Commission has been discussing for a while the creation of a third precinct, or the rearrangement of the two precincts to even out the two precincts, because right before the Election Commission made its, took its vote, precinct one had about 500 more voters than precinct two, so we were seeing significantly longer lines in precinct one and precinct two. Taking that into consideration, along with the fact that we know that we have some developments coming online that would have otherwise been in precinct one, the Election Commission wanted to kind of look at things in a, in a longer-term sense, and set things up so that way we wouldn't have to touch it again once those developments came online. So their, their decision was to create a third precinct. But although the Election Commission can, can set the boundaries for precincts, they don't have the authority to set polling locations, that's the responsibility of city council. So, on November 30th, they also made the recommendation that city council work with St. Andrews Church to implement a new polling location. I've spoken with representatives from St. Andrews Church, and they seem to be on board with, with allowing the city to, to use their fellowship hall as an additional location.
Do we have money, do you have money budgeted that you can cover this excess?
So, so we initially overbudgeted from what we thought it would cost to implement the new election equipment, so we do have funds available to, to implement a new precinct.
Thank you.
I just think it's really for, aside from that we were able to use the church as the proximity of the polling place, if somebody misses, they just go, you know, half a block away or so, and we're right there, it's just beautiful.
That, that was one of the things that we discussed, that, you know, if, if people who are used to coming here, come here for the next election, it's fairly easy to say, you know, your actual polling location is only a block away.
We'll approximate to a parking lot.
The, the parking lot was under another consideration. One of the other locations that we had approached to, to look for an additional precinct, or polling location, they turned us down because they didn't think that they had enough parking for major elections.
So, my question, I guess, would be, if precinct one is staying at the senior center, why wouldn't precinct two stay there, instead of having to print voter ID cards for the other half of one, which is now going to be three, and two, because we're switching locations for both, why wouldn't you just do three, and move three to St. Andrews?
Here, you want to stay three?
Why wouldn't you just put three at the church, and have less, and then all the people in two, who are used to voting in two, you don't tell them there's a different location, they get to stay. The majority of the people would stay where they...
Where the precinct is?
Where they actually vote.
So, in, in that instance, you would have, you would have about a little over 2,000 people, about 2,200 people voting at the senior center, and only about 900 voting at, at the, at the additional location. Having precinct two at the additional location...
That's in the first year, it's not in the...
Once, once things even out with, with the addition of, of new developments, with having precinct one and precinct three stay here, and moving precinct two to, to an additional location, you would get about, about 1,700 to 2,000, but split between two precincts in the senior center, while moving 1,300 people over to the additional location. It, it seems a little bit more balanced with leaving one and three here, and moving the, what will be, what is now the larger... the, what will be, what is now the larger precincts to an additional location.
And that's, that's what we, it's the Election Commission, why we recommended that, because we wanted to be able to make it easy to consolidate the precincts for the smaller, so that it would be even more, still remain a bit balanced in those cases. Which through time, it is a little less, but that's what we're looking at.
But through time, it's only the difference of eighty-six people. According to the numbers, thirteen thirty-nine versus twelve fifty-three. I mean, versus telling the majority of them that they gotta go to a different place than they were now.
But, but, but then we wouldn't have to, have to touch it.
Potentially. Potentially.
Ideally.
I'm just asking if it's, if it's additional expense that's unnecessary and telling a whole bunch of people to go vote in a different spot when it's unnecessary for, all for the total of eighty-six people? All for the decrease of eighty-six people?
I, I, I think that, I would say for, for both the short term and the long term, being able to consolidate precincts one and three and make them a little bit more comparable to precinct two, I, I think makes a lot of sense.
I will add, the reason why we decided to rip off a band-aid now and go to three precincts instead of three balancing two is for that same reasons. We didn't wanna have to keep working people around and send out the voter cards and all that stuff. So that's why even though we're allowed two thousand nine hundred ninety-nine people per precinct, we decided to split it in three now.
I just think you're just, you're repositioning a lot more people than you need to if we're not that many people.
I mean, council can decide to do precinct two here, that's my county's decision. You guys can't change the boundaries without the Election Commission, but you can change the location. So if you wanna save the money and put precinct two here, you can certainly do that.
It is ultimately your decision.
I just try to understand the justification. I just haven't heard it very well.
We don't really know how many people, how many people broad street's gonna be. So it could be that that's, you know, I mean, that's a very unknown number.
Okay, so there's a motion by Cousins, second by Fisher. Other questions?
Don, did you concur with Paul's adjustment to the motion?
Yes.
So that's six hundred for senior center and three hundred for...
Well, it's three hundred per polling location, so if they have one precinct, per precinct. So if they can consolidate the precincts, it'll only be three hundred. If it's two, they get six hundred.
Okay, please call the vote.
Smith?
Yes.
Michelle's?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Tao?
Yes.
Knight?
Yes.
Cousins?
Yes.
Keel?
No. New business item L4, consideration of scope of services from OHM to complete a water asset management plan.
Make that one, approve that, at the cost not to exceed eight thousand six hundred.
Second by Smith. Thank you for the not to exceed. Second by Michelle's. Thank you.
So the state's requiring us to do an asset management plan, some memo, ironically, without any funding, unlike the PISAG grant, which funds stormwater and sewer asset management land, so figure. So we staff and OHM worked together to figure out, you know, what we have, because we did do pretty extensive asset management work for one of the door projects back in 2010. And we keep records, reminders, and a lot of paper stuff on all of our water assets. You know, we have books for all the wells and high service pumps and all that. So basically, they're gonna sit down and go through that and try to figure out how to put that into a plan. And because it took the state a year to review our reliability study, we're comfortable that they'll give us until the end of March to completely asset management.
And so to add on to that, the scope of services that we put together walks through all those steps, it's part of the asset management plan. In general, what we're trying to establish is part of that, it's kind of what Dan indicated earlier, is trying to get locations, conditions, tendencies of infrastructure documented. And long-term, not as part of this project, but in many instances, it becomes part of a computerized system that can track that, that can assist with work orders and routine maintenance, that kind of thing. This doesn't get into that level of detail, but it's basically, as communities go through their systems, and every community water supply system in the state is going through the same thing right now, basically identifying where their assets are and what conditions they're in. And then it gets into some of the things we call like criticality assessment. And this, this just puts a little different view onto infrastructure. Not every pipe is as important as every other pipe. You know, in the city here, we have pipes that go on the railroad tracks, pipes that go under, Aaron River, Mill Creek. You know, what happens if those pipes have a break in them? What does that, what does that look like? So this, this allows us to kind of look at those, and then we're looking at beyond that, what happens, we're also looking at what's the likelihood that happens. So probably the biggest indicators are pipe material and age. As part of the, as Courtney mentioned, as part of the reliability study, we did all that information. We looked at old maps, we looked at old plans, and we pretty much have all that documented. So really, the extent of this effort is basically sitting down with staff and getting out the books and figuring out what we have, and then cataloging it and lining it up and passing it on to DQ. And we can, we can get that done in a couple months, get that back into their hands. Any other...
This proposal started out at sixteen thousand four hundred dollars. Courtney made me aware of it. I sat down with our water lead operator, and we went over a bunch of the stuff that's, that we have. And then we gave Patrick a call. And we're gonna, like he said, we're gonna work together. I just wanted you to know that we've already, working with Patrick, we've already brought this down from sixteen thousand dollars, and it might even be less than that, with all of the stuff that we put together to work with them to put it together in this reliability study. It wasn't really fair how this all happened, with it going on for a year and then adding new rules and different things to it, and then not having funding for it. Because we, we really, they didn't publish anything that I, until last week, that I looked on the internet to let us know exactly what they wanted. So we're gonna work through it, hopefully save a little bit more money than eighty-six hundred.
Yeah, we're proposing to basically just kind of get some work groups together and really try to see what we have. The great news now, with, with everything being digitized in the GIS system, it's a great spot for that information to, to stay. It's not just a highlighted map like that to actually assign it to, it's now, we have in real, you know, two D space, digitally.
What do you think the chances are of getting the extension?
We have had communications with DQ, I think you guys did as well, I don't know, talk with them. And they basically indicated, if you show that you're moving towards the, the required, what they're asking for, they would be open to it. So we have a letter prepared, if this goes through, basically saying, hey, here's a proposal, signed, executed, you know, we're gonna work some parts beginning to be done in a couple months.
I've had two phone conversations with Zach, and they've got way too much work and not enough people there. Okay, we've had this in for a long time, and they have just recently taken a look at it to make us aware with the new changes in the rules. So I'm hoping that, give us a little bit of time. Because in reality, we have all the information, I believe, but we need somebody to put it together in this package, so it's not piecemeal. And that's basically what they have. I think they've got most of this information.
Right, I think the state literally has the same analysis of the asset management will be created in 2010. And they just put all that to them. So, yeah, they just don't like that it's not...
I mean, we've had, it's just a long time.
Okay. Other questions? Please call the vote. Thank you for putting that together.
Knight?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Tao?
Yes.
Michelle's?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Cousins?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes. Question carries. Thank you. New business item L5, consideration of final Hudson Street's project change order. Moved by Smith.
Second.
Second by Fisher.
And the amount of that is...
Fifty-three thousand three ninety-two?
Yeah.
Okay. Does this include changing the curb by the mailbox and all that stuff?
No.
This will not include that.
Are there anything, are there anything up there that's in it?
No.
Nothing at all?
No, there's nothing to crack the things that we decided to crack. This is all just work that was done.
So who would do, who would do the parking spaces by the mailbox?
We had contacted Verticare to do them. We've also contacted a couple other contractors as well. We're still trying to get them done this year. We have, still in quotes back from a few of them, but at this point, it's still in Verticare's hands to do that with a lot of breaks.
So...
I think it's not ever changed.
Okay, so wait a minute, I'm trying to separate the sidewalk stuff at the corner, which OHM's covering, from parking space stuff, which, had it been drawn bigger, who would have done it anyway? Right? They're not trying to do that work this year yet, are they?
No, we were, we were going to try to get the ram set. At one point, after last council meeting, we did try to reach out to them, try to see if they could maybe do a compact option, that's called... But they, they...
Maybe I'm not stating my question correctly. So like, like over between Forest and Grand, where the mailbox location is, we put a bump out that was...
Too small.
Yeah, described as being too small, right?
Correct.
So we, we're looking at an option for a larger one, right? Some striped-out spot that would be a temporary pull-off. Do we have a price for that?
We have a, a price we gave to you guys, and then Verticare came back with some pricing, which we, we were trying to push back on it. It was, a lot of it was based on some winter concrete costs. So we'll get an updated cost if they have it in the spring after that.
One of the things we could potentially do with that is include it in our LaCaria bid, I mean, LaCaria bid, our sidewalk project bid in 2018, if we don't want to. Because I mean, Verticare, it sounds like what Verticare bid was pretty significantly higher than what, you know, and that goes for the sidewalk work and for the additional parking space work. So one way to get it actually bid is just to include it, because we have asphalt in that bid, because we're doing intersections again.
Somebody did concrete work on that flag that was dropped this morning?
Yeah, Verticare did that today.
Verticare did that?
Yeah.
Is that the only thing they did?
They did smaller patches here, slabs here there.
Well, they did a little bit around the wall. They put some concrete around the wall, but it hurts a little too.
I, I guess, if this is what we're dealing with, and it just deals with that, I'm willing to vote for this, but I'm certainly interested in what's gonna happen with the rest of the process there, you know? The research down at the mailboxes and the rest, rest of our...
It's been worse.
And if that, and, and I realize it's the eleventh day of December, and you're not gonna pour a lot of concrete probably unless God warms it up very significantly, and that may not happen this year. So, do we wait till next year, have to live with it? There's not gonna be people walking on that sidewalk, there's still gonna be people driving on that road all the time, but...
Right, I think there're gonna be removals of the sidewalks that need to be taken out.
Right, that's, still my goal is to get, certainly the twenty percent on the northwest corner, we'd like that taken out and at least set up for the spring, so as soon as weather breaks, we can come in for that.
And you're just gonna put gravel on it at that time? Now?
Yes, that's what, that's what our goal was, and we're working with contractors. Pushed back a little bit, actually quite a bit on that concept, so we're trying to find other contractors to take care of it. We'd like to be better off as a more gradual ramp than twenty percent.
So I just, I want, I didn't have to drill down too much more, but like on the curb and gutter item?
Yeah.
Where did we do an extra three hundred feet?
There was some, we switched from spill-in to spill-out, I believe, in some spots. For instance, we have a deduction of about two hundred five feet of F4 curb kind of offsets that. And then we added some additional, we went farther with curb by our horse peddler. We had initially talked about keeping that in place, but we ended up taking it all the way around the radius up to Baker.
Okay, I see.
This is, yeah.
I didn't see the offsetting one. Okay.
I mean, there, did they curve in that alley, too?
Yes, yeah, Dan's right. There was, we brought curb, I think, on the north side, I'm sorry, the south side of Hudson, into the alley. Thanks very much.
And as you were going up the street, there was a new curb, put a two across from... Okay, that's good. I didn't see the offsetting two or five, like I got the...
Yeah. Thank you.
I have the same question. Okay, call the vote. Please call the vote.
Cousins?
Yes.
Knight?
Yeah.
Tao?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Michelle's?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Question carries.
Yes, sir.
Just while we're on the path to the Hudson, I just wanna ask a question. The block of Hudson between Forest and, is that gonna be on the list for coming here?
No, we...
Finish that up?
No, we won't be able to do any local road projects till 2020.
We can figure our way to do one block?
No, that's, that would be, what, three hundred thousand at least?
Wouldn't be quite that, it'd be, it's a long block.
Yeah, so actually, I included in here the road, street fund account summary, and you can see that we don't have any available road mileage until 1920, because we have the roundabouts and Central Street, that's federal money.
Well, we could find some, just to see the cash, you know, we started the project, but it's like incomplete, because that last block isn't done.
Right, yeah, no, we hope to be able to, to get to it, but it's just not, you know, once we know what Central Street's gonna cost, and we really need the final cost on the Baker Shield Dan Hoy project, because we still have write-away costs that we have anything factored into this, so...
Jim, are you talking about from Forest to Dexter and Arbor?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
It's that, you know...
Wait, it's on one side?
No, it's, it's on, yeah, on Hudson Street, from Forest to Dexter and Arbor. That's... It's a common stone effect on the Ann Arbor side.
Yeah, we knew we, you know, we had to cut that block off.
Right, I understand that. But I mean, there's still a sidewalk there. So if somebody were gonna...
On one side, the sidewalk?
Coming across.
No, no, no.
Yeah, I'm not talking about the whole...
I'm talking about doing the...
Oh, you want the whole, that's when the picture was so hard. Okay.
Well, I'd be happy to... What I thought, okay.
Okay, council comments. So, Mr. Smith, I'll let you continue, that could be part of...
Fisher, okay.
Julie?
I have a couple comments. I attended the Dexter Bay's committee meeting last Thursday evening, and they were just wrapping up from this year, and they were very excited about looking into next year already. But they also brought up the concept about, these girls are very excited about possibly reentgating a light parade during the holiday. re-encating a light parade during the holidays. They were excited about it, and they, it's just a concept, and I just said I would bring it to council's attention, just to let you know, might become in the future. And secondly, I just want to wish everyone Merry Christmas. Thank you.
Zach?
I will start with some current observations of parking. I think when we have large events like Holiday Hustle, we ought to start encouraging and to discourage the participants from parking on Main Street in front of businesses for five hours while they're doing their hustle or doing whatever. While I was standing outside there, I saw several people with the bins, their car parked in front of Pacnee, and they just wandered off for a couple hours. I will say, we absolutely have residents above Main Street parking long-term. Today at 5:00, when I dropped some stuff off at city offices, there were several cars there that still had snow on them, so they've been there since 9:10 this morning. But I'll take this back now, I'm going historical, sorry, Ms. Jones, I'm stealing this from you. I happen to be looking through some city council minutes in 1944, and one of them was concerned that there was not enough parking in Main Street in 1944, and people were parking too long, so they authorized the marshal to do something. Another fun thing from 1944 was the mileage rate, we've gotten now 14.6 and change in 1944, the mileage rate for the build was actually 15. So we've, we've cut taxes since then, so congratulations, everybody. I am working on ideas, I was challenged by, to do this at the last meeting there, for what a youth council might do, and similar thing for housing, so I'm going to be ready when we get to that section of the year. And I will not be here on the 27th, I'm taking my wife, an Italian student, to New York for some adventures there. So have fun.
And an Italian student?
Yes. State Department says we got to be in charge, so it's all good, not just going around picking one.
Does the student possibly have a name?
Yes, it's an Italian name.
It's an Italian name.
Hey, student.
Okay, Mr. Cousins? I'm not sure I can follow all of that.
No, I'll go along with the theme, Julie, everybody have a happy holiday, Merry Christmas, and starting out with a lot of activity at Gordon Hall was great in the last couple weeks, and then to the wonderful community band concert we had yesterday. My son had not been in the Performing Arts Center since he left Dexter Schools, and obviously he wasn't there when he left, but he was blown away at that facility there, the sound and the people that were there, it was packed, it was a great, great, great afternoon of fun.
Very good. Ms. Tal?
No, thank you.
Ms. Fisher?
Happy holidays to all, and I will not be here on the 27th.
Is everyone asked me to the 27th?
Yeah.
Well, good, because we have the, I'm sorry, I think we can pay shortly after, yeah, we'll be doing council pay shortly after.
Yeah, I'll do it, I'll do it on the Wednesday, or Thursday, whichever.
Thursday.
Thursday, yeah.
Okay, Ms. Jones?
One thing I wanted to comment on in the Holiday Hustle, one of the things in telling you where all the route is going to go, they never tell you that this, all these people are going to run down the dead-end portion of Third Street, so you can't move even out of that street, living, you can't go anywhere for an hour, hour and a half. I think that needs to be in their material. They used to make them go door-to-door and put flyers on, they don't get that anymore. So, kind of stuck. I could have turned the dog off.
Pretty sure they'll move it during the car.
No, I don't think they do. The cars don't move, I've seen that.
Is it for me?
Not Athena, this is the other one.
Courtney has a comment?
Sorry, I have one thing I forgot to mention, that was, I just wanted to give a quick update on the right-of-way for the roundabout project. So it looks like the Rural Commission has an agreement, they're working on finalizing written documentation with the schools, so it looks like that when it's done, I believe that the Avery's are going to be moving to the Brown House, and then the schools are going to have a weekend put in, pay always have to put in, access for them to put a future road, as a fourth leg of that right-of-way. And they do, it sounds like have an agreement with the Brown House, the one that's losing the subject deal, it sounds like that is done. And so now the last one that's major is Walkout, and it's not looking like that's going to get settled easily, so there's a chance, they're going to try to see if they can get, continue the project, and then kind of argue the costs in a judicial proceeding, but hopefully, if they can get them to at least sign off that, you know, they understand that the cost will be determined later, so that the project can move forward, because they're still hoping to be able to submit plans to them by January or February, so that it can get bid, you know, in May at the latest, probably April, so.
Are those plans available on our website somewhere?
The, no, I don't think so.
County, maybe rural commission?
The Rural Commission has, yeah, so they haven't submitted a final plan to end up with their-
I just haven't seen an overview, so I can't really, I don't know where the right-of-ways are anymore.
Yeah, the most, you know, they have some small access easements and sidewalk easements, but the major ones are the schools, the Brown House and Walkout.
What's the cost of a judicial hearing?
I don't know.
Can you find out?
Yeah, I can ask it.
Okay, we're background in non-arain participation, anyone want to speak this evening?
I forgot to mention, I will be on vacation after Christmas from the 26th, through that entire week, I'll be back on the 2nd for the planning commission meeting.
Great.
Merry Christmas.
Have fun.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, it's a commotion for a turn, vice versa.
Ms. Fisher?
All of them.
All right. We are here.